Can everyone hear me okay? All right, great. The first public hearing tonight is a public hearing regarding Comcast's past performance under its current franchise agreement. This public hearing was advertised in the Daily Local News on October 6th. And the purpose of this hearing is because the borough is engaged in renewing its franchise agreement with Comcast. And Comcast uses Borough Infrastructure to deliver its services to the borough. So that right to use those rights of way for that infrastructure have to be agreed upon with terms between Comcast and the borough. And we're negotiating those with Comcast as a group of municipalities in Chester County. And part of the diligence is to have this public hearing. It's being held pursuant to Section 626 of the Federal Cable Act, which sets forth processes for this type of franchise renewal. Our current agreement is expiring soon, and we've begun this process to negotiate the new agreement. And the borough is seeking tonight, public comment on Comcast's past performance and our future cable-related community needs. So the purpose of this hearing is to gather input from citizens and council regarding the past performance of this cable operator, the borough's future cable needs. And this is the best opportunity in this moment for municipalities to assert their rights with respect to the cable operator, to obtain important benefits in return for granting those cable operators the right to use its public rights of way. So these benefits that we could get from Comcast are strong and enforceable customer service, a state-of-the-art system, protection of our public rights of way, franchise fees that come back through the use of the services back to the borough and help fund our borough budget, reporting requirements on the cable operator, legal protections for the borough, and better mechanisms for enforcement of this franchise agreement. So this is simply an opportunity for council. We'll do this just like any other public hearing, comments from council, if there are any, and comments from the public, and then we would close the hearing and report these comments to our attorney who's working with Comcast in the negotiation.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up to public comment first. Okay, seeing none. Counsel?
I have none.
I don't have Comcast, so I couldn't say.
I love Comcast. I work for Comcast.
Okay, I guess I will ask for a motion then.
Or simply having a hearing for public comment. So if there is none either from council or the public, we would close the hearing and report that there was no comment. Sorry?
Thank you. We will move on then to our second public hearing to amend certain regulations in subsection 338T, Community Campus Committee.
So this is also simple, and I will just want to go back to the Comcast. I've sat through about five different municipal public hearings on Comcast, and nobody has anything to say. So don't think you're unusual that nobody's commenting. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. This is an amendment. This is, Chapter 3 is your administrative code. That's contained within your borough code. Section 3-38 deals with your ad hoc committees, your different committees that you have. This amendment makes minor changes to Section 3-38, Paragraph T, which is where you created the ad hoc committee, Community Campus Committee. Just some minor changes to the responsibilities of the committee, the membership, terms of office of the committee. This was already vetted by the board, but had to be advertised as a hearing. We did so on October 7th, 2025, in the Daily Local News. So it's ready for the board to act on.
Is there any public comment? Counsel? Okay.
I also love the Community Campus Committee. It's great committee. I make a motion to move forward.
Second.
Mr. Metric, please call the question.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes. Okay, finally, we have a public hearing to enact an ordinance reauthorizing the Westchester Business Improvement District five-year final plan.
It's appropriate for me to give it all for a no.
Please.
Counsel? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is John O'Brien. I'm the Executive Director of the Westchester Business Improvement District, otherwise known as Downtown Westchester. I want to thank council for your consideration of this ordinance that's before you that would authorize the Business Improvement District from 2026 to 2030. This has been a long process, but I believe that this enabling legislation will allow the business district to continue to help Westchester grow and improve. My organization was created in 2000 with the goal of helping to revitalize Westchester. For our longtime residents, the success is clear to see. Our job is to be an economic development engine for the town that focuses on recruiting new businesses and supporting them, attracting new and existing customers to town, ensuring the downtown is clean and safe, and serving as an advocate for our small business community. Over these next five years, we've set a very high bar for ourselves. We want to expand our cleaning green efforts by purchasing additional trash cans for South High Street. We also want to plant gardens along South High Street in the bumpout areas that has already been installed. We want to expand the usage of our cleaning green associates to help mitigate trash on sidewalks, both during the week and at the weekends. We want to implement a streetscape plan along East Gay Street and East Market Street that focuses on pedestrian safety and ensuring those areas have adequate things like parking and that development is congruent with the rest of the downtown, as outlined in the borough's comprehensive plan from 2017 that has not fully been enacted on a large part due to COVID. We want to help make John O'Green Park a downtown destination that is envisioned in the borough's upcoming pros plan. We want to examine and hopefully begin to implement a trail along the old-fashioned railroad. We want to expand the presence of our holiday decorations outside of our current boundaries. We want to find new events to bring into town to increase our foot traffic. We want to continue to work with the borough to implement smaller growth policies, and we want to continue to provide solid data metrics to council businesses and proprietors about the economic health of our town. Finally, we want to expand the marketing efforts to ensure Westchester is the premier place to stay, shop, dine, and explore. While our organization focuses primarily on commercial buildings, we do provide a benefit to the borough at large. Every for sale listing or rental listing for an apartment that you see will mention the downtown because those realtors and sellers realize that Westchester or downtown is a jewel of our town. Even our commercial properties outside our boundaries have listed themselves as being part of the downtown because they see a value in that attracting tenants. This plan maintains the mileage rate that has been the same for the last 10 years. We've worked hard at fiscal discipline, leveraging grants, and increasing sponsorship dollars to continue to grow and maintain what we do. Any future increase that would be proposed would be required to go through an amendment process where the proprietors have the same ability to object as they do during an authorization. The plan before you is in full compliance with the state's Neighborhood Improvement District Management Act. Unlike so many other things, this law gives property owners the ability to directly object. If more than 40% of the parcels object, then we cannot be authorized. This is very unique control that property owners have to keep us in check. Our objection rate for this plan is only 2.3%. And I will note that we have not had a single reauthorization since our founding in 2000. We haven't had at least one or two objections. This plan does include a growth of our organization, including the main economic corridors of South High Street, East Gay Street, and East Market Street. This is not the first time we've grown our borders during an authorization vote. In 2010, we added 87 new parcels mainly along our western border west of Darlington Street. I fully understand that this plan is not an easy undertaking. In every authorization, we face some objections. I wish there was a way to find a perfect solution, but as council sees on a daily basis, that is not always the case. We will work hard over the next five years to prove our value and to show everyone the importance of investing with us. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Can you repeat the rejection rate once again?
So it is 2.3%. So that is out of the total proposed district. When we talk about the authorization of the organization, the state law does not have a separate vote or separate process for a reauthorization. Basically, it complements or comprehends that every five, 10, 15, 20 years, however long you're seeking, you're creating a new district. So it was 2.3% within the entire district. And even if we look at the 85 parcels that are not currently in the business district, the objection rate would be about 9.5%, which is still well below that 40% threshold.
Could you describe what the process is for notifying?
Yeah, sure. So. I'll start with what the legal process is, as defined by the NIMAs, the short term for the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Act. That requires that our board adopt a plan that includes the mileage rate, a map, the list of the parcels, and then notify, send that to the local municipal governments, in this case Borough Council, and then notify all the property owners in 30 days in advance of a public hearing. Up until that point, the plan is called a preliminary plan. During that preliminary plan, we get feedback from the public as well as from council. If council were to want a significant change to that plan and not vote to make that the final plan, then that process starts over. We create a new plan 30 days from then. We have a new public hearing, and it goes forward like that. That's why we started this in July, in order to give us enough time to properly address any changes. During the July hearing, council did vote unanimously from it. We did not hear any feedback for significant changes. Then there is a 45-day window in which benefited property owners can submit an objection. We're not legally required to send out notice to the property owners that that 45-day window starts as soon as council adopts it. However, we did because we wanted to be transparent. So we sent the five-year plan as a whole document again, along with a cover letter outlining the process in which you can object, sending that to Mr. Metric, as well as saying that while it does not include a rate increase, it does include an expansion of the properties. So that's the, and after that 45-day window closes, if we've not hit a 40% threshold, then the local municipal government moves forward with an adoption of the ordinance. Most, this has always kind of been a pro forma exercise at the end, assuming that a municipality doesn't get to the 40%. But council does have the ability not to pass an ordinance. Outside of that, and I sent this fact sheet to the council earlier, we had really worked to gather input from not only property owners, business owners, residents in the borough, visitors to Westchester. We'd held meetings, we held surveys, we worked this on a committee level, we met one-on-one with people, we sent out emails soliciting input, we sent out to the expansion area a specific letter saying that this was under consideration in the beginning of this year, calls out the property addresses that are being considered, asking for feedback. We also walked around the expansion area to make sure we were, and if we had emails or phone numbers, we were able to, outside of that letter, make a contact with a good amount of the business owners and get their feedback. Generally, we're seeing a three-to-one positivity on that, and that's why we decided to continue to move forward with this. And then we also took that advice and then obviously to get the public hearing notice as well.
So with the one-on-ones and outreach that you did, what sort of things were incorporated into the preliminary plan? Were there anything of note?
Of note, there's, you know, especially within our expansion area, we're talking about like streetscape improvements, lighting improvements, the holiday decorations, individual business promotion. That's something we heard, and we've heard for a very long time. So, you know, we've been able to grow our social media presence and use that as a marketing tool for our businesses. And we constantly hear from businesses like, why can't I be included in your events? Why can't I be promoted on the website as the business directory or in your business spotlight program or just through your social media promotion? And that's always because we have very strict boundaries on that. Even this year, like we just held our gallery walk, and we included two businesses that are right outside that are in the proposed district, Archo and East Market Street, and the Regalliger Studios on East Chestnut as well. So those are some of the things that we said. And then we've heard about, you know, doing events like with John O'Green Park. That's another thing that we've talked about. The trail along the railroad, that's been something I've had in the back of my mind for a very long time since I took over this position in July of 2020. But it helps to be able to actually have that within our footprint and able to move forward with that.
Counsel, any comments or questions?
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, the expansion area for the Business Improvement District, can you, some of them are on South High Street. Can you give a breakdown of where most of the 85 new?
Sure. So they're mainly concentrated either on East Gay Street, East Market Street, or South High Street. So South High Street would be High Street, south of Minor Street, all the way to Price Street. On Market Street, it'd be east of Matlack to Franklin Street. And then from Gay Street, it would be east of Matlack Street down to across Borough Hall. And one of the reasons we went a little further on Gay Street, for instance, is the developer, the Five North Adams Project specifically showed an interest in being part of the bid as they contemplate that because there is a commercial element in their original proposal that they were putting there. And there's also some ancillary properties on East Chestnut Street that requested to come in. El Lamon requested to be in. Junkjumps on South New Street requested to be in. So there is some small parcels that come in in the neighborhood districts. Mainly, we stick to the town center, but in the neighborhood districts, they were proper commercial properties from, you know, very long ago, they've always been commercial properties, they made a specific request to come in.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I'll just say, I sit on the bid board, and it's a really wonderful organization, and they work very hard with very few people on staff and get a lot done, and it's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, 2000 it started?
Yes, 2000. So the iterations, there was an attempt to start the organization back in the mid-'90s. That original one did fail because it was, I think, hard to conceptualize what the bid could do for the town. We like to look at our record as a record of success for the last 25 years and want to keep pushing forward to that. One thing I did forget to your comment, pedestrian safety has also been something we've heard a lot about, especially along the eastern side with wards feeling like, the second ward feeling cut off from being able to come in and be a part of the downtown.
Okay, thank you. We'll open up to public comment. Just a reminder, there's a five-minute limit.
Daryl Cook, South Walnut Street. Is there any plan to make the bid self-sustaining with its own tax base? And anyone interested or in favor of the rail trail should take a look at the area. Thank you.
So on the self-sustaining, as I mentioned, we've worked hard to try and grow revenues outside. We obviously do have an assessment base. Council has always been gracious with an appropriation to us. As I said, you know, we see that as appropriate continuing because while our primary focus has been commercial ventures, the property values of everybody that owns property in the borough is greatly helped by having a thriving downtown. So that's how we view that as an investment there, and we partner with the borough in so many different activities. As for the trail, the first step will be to do a feasibility study. The concept has been there before. If we look at what's done in like Jim Thorpe, they have a great rails, the trail, it's a great economic development. It is not something that would take away from efforts of a train, whether a passenger rail or the current old-fashioned rail because it would sit next to it. But step one would be to source of like a county planning grants in order to study the feasibility and build that out. But there is already an initiative, the Turks Head Trail is what it's called. There are already a group of folks, volunteers, that are working on that. We'd like to use our professional services because volunteers, it's hard for them to put in the same man hours we could on that.
More public comment?
Good evening to all. My name is Bob Hall. I represent the property of 116 South High Street. It's in the name of my corporation, Francis A. Hall Incorporated. I've spoken to you before, drafted a letter in compliance with the 45-day rule relative to my position, which is against being included on one of the 85 new parcels. I will not debate nor say anything derogatory about what bid has done for this borough. I was born here, I grew up here. I'm very impressed with what I see. However, I also recognize there's a funding concern, and that's part of the reason, if not the reason, for the 85. On the High Street side, as you go south for the newer area, there really aren't that many businesses. And as you've heard me in the past say, I really think there's an imbalance, an unfairness of giving exemptions to that portion of any building that has residential usage. That means, in my case, the full building I have is fully commercial, has no residential. So I'll be paying my fair share. But if I am correct, Mr. O'Brien, if you were to take away that residential exception right now for the existing property owners, you would raise about $94,000. If you take in what I believe they're hoping to get with adding us 85 with the residential exclusion included, it's about $55,000. Does that number sound about right? It's obvious, if you're looking for a solution, which I can appreciate their board has been doing, and I compliment them for that. They run a business, and they're trying to be business savvy. It would make more sense to look to those property owners that directly benefit. I mean, when you have an apartment complex, you're getting good rent. Why? Because the people that rent from you are very happy to be in the center of town, and that's an attribute that we should all be proud of. But they're getting a free ride by that exclusion. So to me, that's where my objection is, as well as my tenant currently has made it clear to me, they don't get walk-in traffic. So even though it sounds good for what bid does, she, the owner of the tenant, does not see a direct benefit for being under it. And that means her rent is going to be impacted by what I'm assessed, and I'd like to keep her. So with that, I appreciate being given this opportunity and congratulate you on any decision you make. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Eric Lorgus, 103 South High Street. So I was here in August, and I pointed out what I felt was inequity in that the 85 parcels that were being added to the bid, and the threshold to stop the 85 parcels from being added was 140. So there is absolutely no way that the owners in the expansion area could have ever stopped this expansion. They really had no say. I mean, you know, I'm having a say here tonight, but really, there was absolutely no way that the owners in the expansion area could stop it. So John mentioned that the bid is 25 years old, and that's correct. And I remember when the bid was formed. It took a long time. There were community meetings, there was a committee, and there's a lot of negotiation and going back and forth. And finally, you know, the boundaries are drawn, and the boundaries have been changed slightly over the years, but pretty much the boundaries that exist today were the boundaries set back in 2020. Now, the biggest change between the process 25 years ago and this one is that there have been no community meetings. Now, John has said that he reached out, he reached out to me, he reached out to other people individually, letters, emails, whatever. But there is a difference between one-on-one consultation and a community meeting where everyone can hear everyone else's point of view, and that hasn't happened in this case. But I think the biggest thing that I object to, and by the way, I'm not criticizing the existing bid. I think it's been wonderful for the borough, and I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. My criticism is of the expansion process. Now, there were two mailings that John talked about. One was in June, and one was in July. The first mailing mailed the plan along with a one-page letter that announced the public hearing. The headline on the letter was "Public Hearing to Reauthorize the Bid and Adopt the Five-Year Plan." That was the headline, nothing about expansion. The second mailing, there wasn't so much a headline, but it was like a lot of, you know, it was like two paragraphs of text. But again, no headline about an expansion. The plan itself, the five-year plan, mentions expansion in two places. One is on page three, it's a letter from John, and he says something about the unique aspect of this plan is an expansion. But there are no details given in there, nothing about what streets are involved, how many parcels. You know, I watched the tape, I wasn't here in July, but I watched the tape of that public hearing, and John gave a lot of useful information that I think the owners in the expansion area should have had to consider this thing. The biggest problem, I think, is a lot of the owners in the expansion area received the plan, looked at it and said, well, I'm not in the bid, and put it aside, which is what I did, right? I didn't pay any attention to it. The July mailing was, as I said, a one-page letter and the five-year plan again. The two mentions of expansion in the plan, one is the thing that I just mentioned, you know, on page three in John's letter, and the other one is all the way at the back where it talks about holiday decorations. And it said, especially, you know, holiday decorations, something about the expansion area. If you read that plan and you are an owner in the expansion area, you have no idea that this affects you. There's a list of tax parcels in the back that's pages and pages long. You would have to leaf through that to find out that you're in there. There is a map of the bid, but it doesn't show the old bid or the existing bid in the expansion area. It's just a map. And so, you know, the notification to those in the expansion area was so subtle that I think many missed it. And so when John said that, you know, there were only eight objections and gave the percentages, I'm not surprised. I think that many people are not aware of this, and I think next year, you know, when the bills go out, there are a lot of people who are going to be shocked. So, you know, I guess the biggest problem here is that the threshold of objecting to this plan was always insurmountable, and I don't know how to cure that. I mean, I went to the bid board meeting yesterday, and that's the first I'd heard that, that John says, the way the law is written, that you can't, you can't do any, first of all, I suggested to the bid board that they reauthorize the existing bid and take the expansion as a separate matter. That's what I asked you to do back in August. And he said, can't do that, that the, I mean, they could do it as two separate things, but the voting as a separate transaction for expanding the bid would still have the same threshold. It would still be 140 votes in order to stop it. So the democratic aspect of bids has been defeated. And I'm not saying it's the bid's fault, but it's clearly the owners in the expansion area, you know, didn't get much of a notification, and even if all of us knew about it, and even if like 60 of the 85 had objected, it still wouldn't have been enough. So I'm asking you to reject the plan, the five-year plan. I wish I could have been here in July, I would have told you that, and ask the bid to just reauthorize the existing district. And then, as far as expansion, and John mentioned here tonight that there are several parcel owners that wanted to be included in the bid, and that's fine, and I don't want to get in the way of that. But, you know, I think that we should go the route that was done 25 years ago, to have community meetings, to have more intake, more input from the owners in the expansion area, to work out what the expansion should be, and then go forward with a plan that already has most people agreeing with it. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, you have any comments?
So on the financial aspects, I know that had been raised. I did do a preliminary 2026 budget and to work out numbers if we just operated under the current district, and I can balance the budget still without a rate increase. So this is not an effort to just, you know, increase our assessment dollars. A lot of the things I outlined, new plantings, that's a landscaping contract, additional Big Belly trash cans, additional holiday decorations, working on the streetscape plans at consultant, looking at a county grant for a planning grant implementation, that's additional funds. So there's going to be a lot of funds spent in an expanded district. As far as, you know, process, we've tried to make this as transparent and as humanly possible. We really have gone above and beyond the efforts that are required by law to reach out to folks. Most of the people here who objected have had that reach out. I will note on that second letter that was sent out to the property owners on how to object, the third paragraph says, please note, the final plan does not have a rate change from the previous bid plan, but does include an expansion of the boundaries of the Westchester bid. And that was stapled to the top of the five-year plan. Once again, we weren't required to send that out, but we wanted to be transparent about this. Additionally, on our website, we did have current boundary tab and a new boundary tab to try and help make that noticeable as well. So I do believe we've kind of worked, you know, our committee meetings are open as well. well. We've done everything that we can to try and make sure people's voices are heard, and I understand that there are going to be objections. My goal over the next five years should this pass is to earn that trust, and so that when we reach 2030, the, you know, the people who objected will see the value in what we do. But if we do not live up to our obligations in 2030, the property owners will still have the ability to vote to object. As far as a democratic process, threshold is 40%. It's not 51%. So that means if 60% of the people wanted something, it still gets killed. So in some sense, there is, this really does protect the minority opinion. And it's not an impossibility. There's obviously, when this was first contemplated, the first go-around, the district was conceived to be a lot bigger. It was going to be South High Street, it was going to be even farther than we're proposing in the Commercial Service District, it was going to go more down Hanham Avenue, and that did fail that time. Thank you.
My name is John O'Connell. I have offices at 327 and 329 South High Street. I've heard a lot here tonight. I'll just try to, I think Eric did a wonderful job framing the legality side of it. I'm going to talk common sense, but I think that's missing in this presentation so far. I hear the word downtown expansion. Downtown to me means the center of town, retail space, someone's got a business, and that's what's going to be affected, and affected only. If I have a shoe repair store, I hope they're not going to be included. If somebody has an office space, they should not be included. If somebody has a retail business, they should be included in the confined area. The other thing is, I'm hearing we've got to go move forward with it now. I don't know what's so hurried. I have quite a few properties in the borough of Westchester. I did not receive a notice on this. It was only through Eric that I learned of the problem at hand. And if I'm a large property owner, somebody should have come and individually spoke to me about it. Oh, I'll follow the law. Law says I've got to file it in the newspaper on a certain date prior to this meeting tonight. This is an important subject matter. It's like a new tax of 2.3%. I think businesses are taxed a lot to begin with. We have one of the largest tax bases of any municipality in the area involved around here. I know Borough Council had someone look at this, oh, I'm going to say about 15 years ago, and put a plan together. Let's look at every aspect of our business and make recommendations to changes. There were some good ideas. Not one of those programs were instituted, not one. It makes one wonder. I know that everyone tries to be effective with their spending, but who's monitoring the programs coming out of bid? Are they getting three bids on everything that they're doing? Are they in fact looking at it for best use of the dollars being spent? I know they expanded the personnel not long ago, it was just John. Now it's John and an office man. It's John, office manager, and his secretary. That costs money. So before things had been added, someone should have reviewed it. Now, I'm sure somebody in Borough Council is monitoring it, but I don't know who is. But I know as a businessperson, I would be monitoring it. 85 parcels, that is quite a bit of, a goal without a plan is just a wish. So if we're going to have a plan for this expansion and all the activities that are going to be added, all the activities should just not be talked about in generality, but specifically, what is it that is going to be done and at what cost? Because some of it, somebody in Borough Council might say, "I don't think that's a good idea. We'll hold that one off for another two years, or this one needs more money and we'll do this." I think you need to have more hands-on in the process itself. I know I would. So I think if I were just leaving you with a thought, and that is, wait, you don't have to make a decision right now. It's 25 years in the making. Another year is not going to kill anything, and you'll know you're going in the right
Thank you. Any additional public comments?
Hi, my name's Diane Davis. My husband and I own the commercial property at 320 East Gay Street, and our property is included in the proposed expanded bid area. We submitted an objection to Mr. Metrick, and it was specifically with regard to the expansion. We don't in any way object to the reauthorization of the existing bid, but when it comes to the expansion, we objected for a number of reasons. The first one has kind of been touched on by both Mr. Lorgas and Mr. Hall in that we did not receive any prior notification. We've owned our property since 2013, so we're visible, we're there. We did not receive any prior notification other than the first letter that we got in June for the July meeting. We attended the July meeting, found out that then it had been, it was not for public discussion, it was for public comment, but it was already moving on to the next phase of being where we are today. Had we had the opportunity again to share public information with other people in the expansion area, I think we would find that there are more than the few of us who submitted a written objection that have reasons why we're objecting to the expansion specifically. When it comes to the financial aspect of it, I feel like, or our opinion, my husband and I, is that the expansion unnecessarily and disproportionately burdens the parcels in the expansion with making up for the lost revenue of $37,000 in grant revenue that's being lost at the end of 2025. A lot of my information is coming with, from a direct email exchange with Mr. O'Brien. The five-year plan includes a $56,344 in additional assessment revenues that are generated from the expanded bid. Forty-seven of the 85 parcels are paying 100% assessment, and 38 of them are discounted or are exempt. So based on those numbers, the proposed reauthorized expanded bid is being disproportionately subsidized by just over half of the expanded bid parcels. As an alternative to expanding the bid to make up for lost revenue, we would like to see the Borough Council and Director O'Brien consider removing the mixed-use discount, as Mr. Hall also mentioned. Based on the information provided by Mr. O'Brien to me in email, doing so would generate $94,600 in additional assessment revenues within the existing bid while maintaining assessments for all those parcels at three mils. The revenue generated by the existing bid, which is only $56,344, obviously is far less than that $94,600. So if the five-year plan target revenue is at least the $56,000, you could far exceed that with the $94,600 and not even need to expand the bid. You could, again, remove that discounted assessment from the mixed-use properties that are actually benefiting the most from the initiatives of bid. Again, we're not against the reauthorization of bid. We've been residents of Westchester for 35 years and enjoyed all the wonderful things that bid has done for the downtown Westchester. But it seems short-sighted that you're looking to generate revenue from a small number of properties through the expansion as opposed to generating more revenue from the individuals who are actually benefiting most from the initiatives of the bid. So again, we're just asking that even though this is probably going forward after tonight, and we'll say after five years, we see how things go, the bottom line is, you're still disproportionately burdening those properties that are 100% commercial with the expenses associated with bid initiatives when you could instead be spreading them out among those entities, those parcels, that should in fact be paying for the benefit they're receiving from bids initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, you're good, I'm glad. I had a question. I heard you say for 2026, you weren't counting on this initiative to expand bid for your budget.
Correct, yes.
Did I hear you correctly? So that if there's these type of objections, then, and you're not counting on it for 2026, excuse me, would that give you time then to go back and have the type of open meetings with all of these people that they're talking about? Because clearly, there are valid concerns raised.
So we, for one, because of the way this is all scheduled, this authorization, if it does not happen now, because of that 30, 45-day window, we would not be authorized, we end at the end of '25, so we would not exist going forward. As I mentioned, as far as like on the oversight point, Borough Council points my board, my Board of Directors is the oversight on that. We have a member of Borough Council who sits on the board. Any financial check that's signed is signed by two members of our executive board, it's not signed by myself directly. They also have to sign off on every invoice that we do, so there are the financial controls there. On the mixed-use piece, I think, I'm not going to say that we don't have a benefit to residents, but one thing that becomes difficult is determining that line. So if you have a property on, a rental property on one side of minor street versus the other, you know, one side, because it's in the business district, is going to get assessed and one isn't. So cutting off and deleting any of those lines is tough. Our primary, primarily objective is as an economic development engine for commercial spaces as well. If I thought that having additional, you know, those conditional meetings would change opinions, I would be happy to, but I sincerely believe that no matter what plan I put forward, there are going to be individuals who do not want to be a part of it, and that is why we have that 45-day window vote, for everybody to have their say. And I think the conversation would be different here if we were sitting here seeing a large percentage, even in just the expansion area. But we're not. So our ask is that council continue forward and pass this ordinance to allow us to move forward.
I remind you, what was the objection rate in the expansion?
So for the entire district, it's 2.3%. It's 9.5% for just the 85 parcels that are not currently in the district.
So one question on that 9%, or any of the percents. I know there's a window of time where the letters or the objections are due. Are the percentages, was there anything that came in after that window of time that is not in those percentages, like somebody was five days later?
No one has reached out to me, and I don't know, Sean, has anybody additionally reached out past the, I believe it was an August 30 deadline? Yeah, I did not, and nobody, I was not notified that there were any additional objections. And we've had, I mean, even in businesses, for, you know, some of the objections we did receive, we had businesses who reached out about being part of our events, about being promoted via social media, and we've already begun to do that.
Good evening. Scott Zookin, 121 East Gay, Zookin Realty. I just wanted to have a voice for the property owners that are in the expansion area that are happy to have a bid there. No one likes to pay taxes. However, I know some of my friends that do have properties in that area as well as me are happy to get this bid tax to pay because of the benefits that we get from bid, and I just wanted to let you guys know that and be aware of that. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Additional public comment? Counsel? Kristin, do you need to go through the notification, et cetera, for the...
The bids, Counsel Mark Thompson did the ad. I think it was published in the Daily Local News in accordance with what's required, and that's what's required. So they handled all of that, me and Sean and Dana on that, so we're, can attest that the proper legal procedures were taking place for you to adopt, to take action on this ordinance this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, is it appropriate to make a motion?
I'd like to say just a couple of things. So, you know, I've heard the objections, you know, starting back a couple of months ago from the individuals that have even spoken tonight, and I took them very seriously. I listened, I talked to John about them quite a bit, and I really was thoughtful because we don't want to be a borough that, you know, taxation without representation kind of thing, right? You know, we want to be able to do this and expand honestly. Where my head goes this evening even, and you'll see this, is at the end of the day, there has been plenty of time at this point. The word has gotten out. If there was, it has publicly, like, I mean, people show up when they start to hear things and rumors get out. And I would say to the people that are opposing this as well, you know, if you really were truly against it, you should also have done your due diligence and helped to rally the troops if you were against it. And I think you did some of that, for sure. But at the end of the day, even that 85 parcel was only at the 9%, right? It wasn't 20%, it wasn't 35%, it was 9%. So when I see that, I hear what you guys are saying, I think you've made some really great comments and all of that, but I, and I don't know how much we can sit here and say that the objection, even from the new parcels, is overwhelming enough to, at least from my perspective, push for reconsideration at this point. That's how I see it, you know, if, again, if you'd have rallied more troops and a bunch of people, even if we'd parsed it out and it was 25% or something, I'd be like, John, you know, but I'm just not, unfortunately, I'm not seeing it. But I hear you guys, I think you guys had some good comments. I also do think, you know, the whole point about apartment owners, that our businesses not getting part of the bid, I mean, I think that's a valid call-out. So, but that's just my thought, and I wanted to just let you guys know that your objections haven't gone on deaf ears, it's just getting back to that percentage, it's kind of hard to say that you had enough of it to make that, make the process change after there has been a long process that has been followed to the best of everyone's ability.
Thank you. Additional comment? Or would you like to make a...
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the reauthorization ordinance for the Westchester bid as has been presented tonight for the five-year plan.
And I'd like to second that.
Mr. Metrick, please call the question.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Ficaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our public hearings for this evening, and I'm going to call the Borough Voting Session Meeting to order at 7:20. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance after we let some folks disperse Hey, let's get started. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Ms. Dorsey. Okay, we have a few announcements of employee years of service to Borough Westchester. James Baker, 25 years, Street Department. Tracy Gordon, 25 years, Police Dispatch. And Chad Cook, 15 years, Police Dispatch. Something to be said, a place to work that people have been here 15, 25 years, that's, that's impressive. Thank you.
Jim Alott up in the, in the Borough building here repairing everything. He seems to know how all of our systems and finishes, and he's a plumber, he's an electrician, he can do everything, so.
Should have pictures next time.
So, 25 years, I, I, you know, with retirement probably coming in the next 10 or 15, hopefully, he's, he's training his successor. Okay, next, we're going to have comments, suggestions, petitions by residents, taxpayers, and visitors in attendance regarding items not on the agenda. Please be advised, there's a five-minute limit.
How's everyone going?
Take your name and address, please.
I'm Patrick Baker Evens, and I'm a student here at Westchester University. I live on Rosedale Avenue. I'm here today because I'm concerned with the state of housing for students at the university and within the borough at large. According to a recently published study, I mean, recently published housing study, there are only 9,000 beds for roughly 17,000 students at the university. And so, there are many students who don't get on-campus housing and either have to commute from home or find off-campus housing renting locally. Which is generally, at least from what I've seen here in the borough, fairly expensive, especially for a college student. This is in part just the laws governing student housing here in the borough, such as the restrictions on, the restrictions on student housing make it so landlords have to get a special license to rent to students. And this naturally causes a lower supply of housing, which, considering the very high demand, leads to higher prices. More attention has come to the WCU housing crisis in the past two or so years. And I'm glad to see that there's been some movement towards increasing the amount of on-campus housing. But this problem exists off-campus too. WCU students are a vital part of this community. And I believe that students should be able to have affordable, safe housing that allows us to continue, to continue being meaningful members of this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, can I interact with Patrick, please?
May I?
Patrick, come on up. I'm a pretty nice guy, even though I got white hair. Can you spell your last name?
Baker Evens. B-A-K-E-R hyphen E-V-E-N-S.
Got it. Now, Patrick, where do you live currently?
I currently live on Schmidt Hall at Westchester University.
So, so you're on, on campus?
On campus, yes.
Okay, and what year are you at the university?
I'm a junior.
Okay, and most of the time when you reach your junior year at school, you're looking to move off-campus. So, what you're asking for is that the off-campus rentals should be expanded so you guys can get out of those dorms?
Yeah, roughly, I believe that, at least from my understanding of the laws as they exist currently, landlords have to get, I guess, a special license for student housing. And naturally, that leads to, I guess, lower amounts of housing for students specifically. I've known several people who've looked for off-campus housing that have been rejected because their prospective landlord realized that particular landlord didn't have the, I guess, license.
You're absolutely correct in that. The, the borough has limited the off-campus permits roughly for 26 years now. So, those who have permits are allowed to keep them, keep moving forward. The, there are plenty of, like, the last two, two gentlemen that actually spoke, they are the two largest landlords in the borough of Westchester. Off-campus apartments, which is on High Street, and Mr. Scott Zuckin owns quite a few of the apartments that rent primarily to students. We're hoping, you'll be graduated by the time anything happens. You're probably in business for 10 years before it even happens, maybe. The, the university is looking to put housing back on campus. But that doesn't happen overnight, you know, the planning, zoning, building, funding, you know, and all that stuff. So, I appreciate you showing up and sharing your concerns, and it looks like you brought your following with you. None of them had, had the guts to stand up, and they, they pushed you up here, but thank you. I, I appreciate you coming in and asking for something.
Thank you.
Patrick, I have a question for you, too. So, you're a junior living in the dorms?
Yes.
You want to be off-campus because, why? I mean, would you rather have an apartment kind of situation? I guess where I'm going is, would you, if there was a on-campus apartment-style facility, is that something that you would be happy to stay on-campus? Or what is the drive to get off-campus?
I would say personally, I don't have too much of a preference. My motivation to come here is because I know there are a lot of people who want to get an apartment off-campus. There's a very high demand, like, generally, we're advised to start looking now for a housing for the next year because of the sheer demand for housing that's within the area.
But would they stay on-campus if there was housing available to them?
I believe so, a lot of people. Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Patrick, look, it looks like one of your friends showed up.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Thedora Caldwell. I'm a freshman at Westchester University. I live in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and I'm very concerned about the housing crisis at Westchester. The housing application for on-campus housing opens October 27th because of the lack of housing. I personally would love to stay on-campus for four years. I love the campus. I love the people. I love the community. But that's not an option, from what I've heard. Freshmen are the only people that have somewhat of a guarantee to live on-campus. We are lacking housing so much that sophomores, juniors, not guaranteed. And we are pushed adamantly. I'm in a freshman experience class, and they are very furiously warning us to apply for housing now for next year because there is no housing. Again, I love, I live in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I came here because it's a beautiful town, a beautiful community. I mean, I walk through the streets, and it's so warm and so welcoming. And I wouldn't be able to go here. I can't commute. I can't, if I don't find housing, I can't go to school here. The apartments are also, I, I don't have a lot of money. I'm a freshman in college. It's very hard to work. The apartments are expensive. And, you know, as much as you can rent with other people, it's hard. It's hard to find that. And they get, they get stashed up. I would love to live in town, but it's expensive. So, I'm here just to tell you that there is a, there's a housing crisis at Westchester University. And I love my university. They're trying their hardest, you know, to find, you know, ways to build houses, build on our current housing, but we're struggling. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, too. We're actually very aware that there's a housing crisis, not, not just student housing, but housing, housing crisis. Affordable housing crisis for families that are trying to earn a living. We, we have a lack of workforce housing, although it is in our 10-year comprehensive plan for the borough. There haven't been a lot of great solutions. So, the housing crisis actually encompasses you and a lot of other people, too. I just want you to understand that, and we're very aware of it. There are no easy, fast solutions to this, but I appreciate you bringing your points to us.
Any other comments?
Challenge went out. Patrick?
My name is Lily. I'm a freshman at Westchester. I live in Tyson Hall. And I just want to start out by saying that the fear of not getting housing is shared by just about every student at Westchester. It's something that I hear students talk about, like, almost constantly, especially as we're getting to the season when it's time to start looking. The applications are coming up in a couple of weeks. And there, I'm sure there's been many, many people before, before me and before us that have asked for change. And I know that obviously, this is going to be a very long process and probably something that will not, I will not see as a student at Westchester. One of the issues that I'd like to see change in is the building codes. There's currently a height restriction on buildings in Westchester, and not allowing for that upward expansion has kind of limited the university and their availability of on-campus housing. And I think that allowing for that expansion would really improve the, would help, I'm sorry, would improve the crisis in years to come, even if it's, takes a long time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Additional comments? Okay, hearing done, we will move on to comments by Borough Council and the mayor, starting with Ms. Vaccaro.
I'm going to take tonight to talk about the Chili Cook-Off, which was scheduled for last Sunday, but was canceled for rain, which didn't really show up. But it's going to happen this Sunday, so come out to the Chili Fest. But I also want to talk about Friends's Food for Friends, or F4. F4 is a group that helps take excess food from restaurants and various institutions and get them to people who need food. So, it's a really beautiful service. You can find them at f4service.org. You can get, you can volunteer and get involved, or you can just come out and eat chili on Sunday and enjoy that. So, come out, join us. It's going to be a beautiful day.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
So, this is going to be the last public meeting before the November 4th election, and I hope all the students are registered to vote. Perfect, great. So, November 4th, Pennsylvania voters will decide whether to retain three Supreme Court justices, Christine Donahue, Kevin Dougherty, David Wecht, in a yes or no retention vote. So, I would like for all of you, including everyone up here and people listening, to vote yes to retain them. I say this not only because of their records of experience and fairness, but because I'm proud to call Judge Kevin Dougherty my friend. I've seen firsthand his commitment to justice, to our communities, and the rule of law. The retention elections may seem quiet or obscure, but they're anything but unimportant. Retaining these judges helps preserve institutional stability, guards against politicalization of the courts, and ensures that legal decisions aren't flipped for simply partisan gains. So, November 4th, I urge you to vote yes to retain Donahue, Dougherty, and Wecht to uphold merit, independence, continuity in Pennsylvania's, Pennsylvania's judiciary.
Thank you. Mr. Travis?
Yeah, November 4th, Election Day. Everybody get out and vote. We know how important every vote is. We wouldn't be here if that wasn't the case. So, thank you, Brian. I was going to talk about that as well. But I'll move on to the next big, biggest thing, which is actually before Election Day, Halloween. Halloween is my favorite holiday, I think. And we have a great Halloween. We have, you live on Minor Street, so you get all the trick-or-treaters over there, but, you know, just a PSA, Public Safety Announcement, watch out for trick-or-treaters this Halloween. I believe Halloween's on a Friday, too, isn't it? So, it's, and is it a full moon? Probably not, but that would be really cool if that was. Anyway, watch out for your trick-or-treaters, be safe, have fun, and enjoy trick-or-treating in, in Westchester Borough.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey?
Hey, Mr. McCoy. I just want to take a few minutes to expand a little bit on comments that I made last night around the, the coexistence of Westchester University and the Westchester Borough. I think that as a community, we, I'd like to see, as a community, that we continue to, one, build our partnership, build the collaboration. I have seen a shift in how we work together. There, you know, again, we need to coexist. I, I think we benefit, the borough benefits from the university, the university benefits from the borough. We need to find compromise on how we continue to move forward, grow, change. Change is inevitable. We heard a lot from, from the university last night. We heard a lot from residents last night. And I encourage everyone to find a, a path forward and a way to continue to work together and, and honestly, benefit from each other's existence. Those are my comments tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Hello, everyone. Lisa Kern's ready. You got, you got to say it, Lisa. There you go. The Sixth Ward, that's my ward. That's where all the parties start. I am the business district where all the parades start, and where all the bars are, and all the ice cream stores are. So, the Sixth Ward's the happiest word in the borough. I got three little points to point out for everybody. On October 30th, at noon, at the Indigo Hotel, we will be dedicating a portion of Walnut Street to Mr. Stan Zuckin. It'll start right around 12 o'clock. The mayor will be there to do a proclamation. The Zuckin family will be there to unveil the sign, and there'll be a light buffet afterwards inside the hotel. So, our, Patrick, free food. College, right? Okay, Lily, you ready for free food? I like that. So, Stan Zuckin was so instrumental in revitalizing our downtown when everybody else moved out in the 70s. That family was very instrumental in saving the downtown, and we're going to honor Mr. Stan Zuckin on the 30th. The second one is, as Mr. Travis said, I didn't know we had to wear a mask tonight. I apologize, Mr. Travis. But the 26th on Sunday, it's normally on a Wednesday we have the parade. The parade's in the Sixth Ward, the sweetest word in the borough, starts at 1 o'clock. So, normally, the Westchester Marching Band participates, which is my most exciting band. Since my degree is from Penn State, I still like the Westchester Band better. And the last thing is, a new restaurant opened up in, in the borough, Station 42 Cabaret. It's right there by Matlack and East Market Street. And the owners of 151 Whiskey, Mr. Herron, have expanded down to the other end of town, which is now in the footprint of the new expanded bid, bids, the bid district down that area. And the reason why he moved down there is because he knew the expansion was probably coming, and there's going to be two apartment buildings down in that area. But unfortunately, they won't be built in time for you guys. I apologize. So, always enjoy the Sixth Ward, the sweetest word in the borough.
Thank you. Ms. Shimoney?
Heard this up, I'm, my, last Friday, we had dinner with Zach Vaughn, Landon Dickerson, and Saquon Barkley.
Whoa.
What? Yeah, we did. Andy Ariello. We were at Andy Ariello, and I, we were getting things cleaned up and, or getting ready to go. I did not recognize them because they're usually wearing their helmets, and I don't pay that much attention. But my boyfriend definitely did. He, he knew exactly who they were. So, so that was pretty cool. They were with their wives. They had a rough week last week. We tried not to bother them, so, you know. Saquon's brother actually goes to Westchester University. And maybe think, we, we have pretty fantastic restaurants and a pretty fantastic school as integral components of the fabric of our town. I'm glad it draws so many different people here, including Saquon and his family and friends. My boyfriend's father grew up in Lockhaven, also a state school. We visited there a couple of times over the years. It was a university town. Students somewhere along- It was a university town. Students somewhere along the way stopped going there. Town's not very exciting anymore. It's pretty dead. We haven't been there for a while. Westchester's pretty vital, isn't it? With all the people and the university and all the students that we do need to house, make sure that everyone has a home to live in. Anyway, we had a rough night, long night last night, too. I think we all did, yeah. If any of you watched, we were here until 10:15, 16, technically. That said, it was a lot of good conversation. I love good conversation and resident involvement. I love that all of you guys have shown up here tonight to talk about the housing crisis, which, as Brian said, we do know, we do know. We're, we, we're trying, the university's trying. You've got, where's the developer over here? Where is, you know, we're building some houses, homes for people, and, and we're trying to do all the things that, that we can to, to increase the amount of housing in our 1.8 square miles. So, so keep coming with your thoughts, not just on housing, on anything. We are here every month. It happens. Not just you guys, but anyone who's out there, you know, we want to hear what you have to say and, and keep doing that. And with that, I think both the Eagles and the Borough have many better days ahead. As Connie said last night, go Birds.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, President. So it's so good to see all the students here. Thank you for coming here and saying what's on your mind and your involvement. Continue to show up and be heard and be a voice, not only, you know, for the university. Because, you know, your real face is in a real town and making a real difference. So we thank you. I just wanted to say two things. Veterans Day is coming up. We do have a parade. Westchester is filled with parades. We have, as you mentioned, the Halloween parade on a Sunday afternoon. I think that's the 26th, right? On the 26th, Sunday afternoon. And then on November 9th, we have the Veteran Day Parade. So come out and support our veterans, because they are the very fabric of this town, and it's important to support them as well. So from one extreme, you get to see the five-year-olds, and you get to see the 55-plus, 25-plus people at the Veteran Day Parade. So thank you all for your engagement.
Thank you. And I also want to thank you all for, for being here. We love that you are here. You, you make the community what it is. Westchester wouldn't be what it is without lots of young folks here. The only thing I would say is, you know, this is your home for four years, so treat it like your home. And, you know, behave like you would at home and, you know, get involved as you would, as if you were in high school and where you eventually settle. We're glad that you're participating and, and hope that you continue to, to do that. So, thank you. Okay, we will move on to reports and presentations. I believe we have none, correct? Is there any new business? No new business. We'll move on to old business. We have four discussion items. The first one is a motion to adopt the preliminary budget and schedule a hearing for November 19 at 6:30 PM.
So I guess we, last night, we moved this to discussion because we wanted to have a brief conversation around where the budget stands as of the copy that was put on our website, which is a balanced budget, but still has some things in it that you want to put, put in or take out. We still need to make some changes. Transactionally, we need to adopt a preliminary budget tonight. It can be the one that we've presented, and we can still have this conversation, or it can be one that was presented plus whatever you want to make changes to, that you could agree to tonight. But we need to get a preliminary budget adopted tonight. I want to give a few update on things that are outstanding. My list is not that long, which is great. I think we're close to the finish line. What I heard last night from everybody was that we want to find the, the $130,704 to fund Good Fellowship's request. What I also communicated, communicated to council was last night, that is that our rental license fees are going to go up. But I got legal counsel to really check my math. And I'm not prepared tonight to tell you what that rental license fee really should be. It is going to go up. It's currently $44. That's the landlords have to pay $44 to have a rental license. We inspect those rental units every year for basic life, safe, life, health, safety issues. And it's going to go up. We don't know how much yet, but somewhere, somewhere, it will be a significant raise because that rental license fee has not risen at all in many, many years. However, our assumption in the budget might be a little too high, so I don't know if, revenue could come down anywhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 on that number. Secondly, I'd like to recommend that we postpone the feasibility study for the recreation facility at Davis Oil Site. Not because I think that's a bad idea. It's just we haven't adopted a park recreation open space plan as a Borough Council yet. And until we do, I feel like we're putting something ahead of the horse that we shouldn't. Certainly feasible if we, if we all decide as a team that that's something we want to do, that we can get right on that in January and February of next year. One thing we've been talking about is we should be putting a call into the current property owner right now and just start investigating whether it's even feasible that that property owner would consent to a sale of property. If that, if that's, if that's a no-go, what's the point in developing, spending $35,000 on a feasibility study? So let us open that conversation and come back to you in the spring. And if we are ripe, and if at that point the fruit is ripe to move forward with that, we'll come forward and we'll ask you for the money at that point to do that study. We heard last night about a library roof replacement, and we had some typos in the budget, where one place it said 115, another place it said 150, 150,000. 150,000 is actually in the budget, but 115 is printed in a couple of other places, so that's why there was that confusion last night. But I just got the water investigation report from our architect. It was published Monday. I'll cut to the chase on this one. Basically, are recommending a stopgap measure to seal and repair interior damage that will cost about 7,500, maybe if that, maybe $8,000, where they do specifically state, and I'll read directly from the report, "The future action, which would be the full replacement of the roof costing $152,000 to $200,000. This approach has the highest costs, most operation disruption in the library, and will address most, if not all, of the water intrusion. So it is the right long-term solution. However, we do not, not is in capital letters, recommend this approach at this time." So we know it's coming. We just are saying we can do a repair right now to make sure that we don't create a bigger problem down the road and plan ahead and put money aside for this, this repair. So I'm suggesting that money come out of the budget and that a little extra go back into the maintenance line item for the library. So I'm suggesting minus 150 on that project and then plus 15 on the maintenance side of that project. So that's a net 135 to our benefit on that transaction.
Can I ask you a quick question about?
Yes, please.
This is the library specifically. So the feasibility study, I think they had estimated around 15. So is the one that was done a comprehensive one, that we can now scratch that, but we still need that?
This was not a comprehensive. This was a very specific study for why.
I just want to make that clear, that we still need that in the budget, in addition to the temporary repairs.
Yeah, we still need that at some point. Because of the price of the dump truck is escalating in the public works budget, and it's not grant-funded, you're not going to find grant dollars for a dump truck. I had conversations with Don Anderson, and he and I agree that postponing that one year and investing $8,000 to $9,000 in repairs in our existing truck will get us through next year and also get us a more, more saleable vehicle when it comes time to replace. He thinks he could get at least $30,000 or $35,000 for a functioning truck. So what I suggest there is taking out the 150 expense for the new truck and putting in 15 for maintenance. So that's another net 135 to our benefit. And if you're doing your math at home, we're kind of coming up to somewhere, some, somewhere of a balance here. And the last thing that I don't have a number for you tonight yet is we're still working on the proposed solution for the gay street, gay and high street crosswalks that are failing. It's basically going, we're going to talk, we have an appointment. I don't know what date it is on our calendars with Kelly, the, the engineer on this project. Basically, the pavers have to be taken up, base repair has to be done. And then we're probably, we haven't met as a team yet, but I think we're probably going to recommend going with stamped concrete as the solution. And the only number we have right now is a treated asphalt number, which is around $85,000. The stamped concrete's going to be more expensive. The most expensive would be to put back the brick pavers, and we've seen them fail. So we're probably leaning towards the stamped concrete solution in that location. But I don't have a number for you yet on that. I imagine it's going to be less than $200,000. So with those two large num, six-figure numbers kind of still for me and for my team, a little cloudy, I want to have the time between now and November 19th to work on that and bring you solutions, talk to you ahead of time, not surprise you the night before what those numbers are going to be. And I know there are some other concerns that you all want to debate and talk about tonight as well.
Yeah, I, I wanted to, thank you, Sean. I, that, this is great work. I mean, you guys continue to refine the budget and, and do great work to, to figure out where the money should go in the right directions and, and what's right for the borough.
And these aren't the only things we're doing. I'll just take a moment to say like, I'll, I'll give you one example, and I'll be quiet. There's a presumption of tax collection rate for the real estate tax in our budget, and Barb and I went over it. We went back and forth, and I say it shouldn't be 98%. It should be 98.2%. Well, you know, a tenth of a percent, what does that really matter? Well, it matters when you're talking about $6 million. It matters to the tune of about $12,000. So those are the kinds of things that we're, I mentioned last night, we're just sort of tuning the strings on the guitar to get it, get it, get it in tune. We're doing all of that as well. We're not just focused on the seven things I just mentioned.
Yeah. And, and, and I said this when I was coming in the door today. I do also think that you have close to a $200,000 opportunity in the parking department based on how we're reallocating the way we meant, like manage the garage revenue and expenses. Right now, the garage revenue net expenses is showing up on the proposed, or the projected 2025 value of $2.2 million. That's the net of the garage revenue expenses. For 2026, we wanted to take that out, and so we put in $600,000 of expenses, but we only matched that with $400,000 of revenue. So we're not actually keeping our revenue flat. We're creating an extra $200,000 in expenses by not just, if we want to pull it out, that's cool. And if we don't know what the number is, that's fine, too. But it should be matched. It should be whatever we put into the expenses should at least be matched in the revenue. And right now, we're planning that garage revenue down by at least $200,000. So I think it's something that you guys should take a look at.
Definitely take a look at, for sure. Yep. You get my attention when you start talking about six figures.
Sean, what about Good Fellowship? That wasn't mentioned. And we talked about a plan today.
Good Fellowship to, to bridge the funding gap would be plus 130,704, which is feasible in the moving around that I just mentioned, pending those two things that I don't know the numbers yet on. What I also proffered last night was a tax, because you have transfers, you have taxes, and you have cash that can solve these problems, budget problems. And we're going to keep working on reducing expenses on our side. And last night, we talked about a, what, how much property tax would need, would need to be raised to cover the 130,000? And that would have been a 2% increase of .17 mils. If you wanted to cover the whole 298,214 solely through a property tax increase or, or an EMS tax, if you wanted to call it that, that milage would be .382, which is roughly a 4.7% increase.
And that's what, $21 roughly?
That is for our friendly median family home we always talk about.
It was confirmed last night.
Be roughly about 40 bucks.
That it is on Price and New Street.
I made a mistake in that last night, so forgive me for the homeowner here. They are, why did I not write, sorry, I didn't get enough sleep last night. I don't know you guys. Oh, I got it right in front of me. All right. Plus $30 in a year to fund the difference, plus 68 for the whole. Essentially, you could look at it that way. If you were funding that entirely through an EMS tax, that, that median homeowner, median valued property owner in the borough, residential property owner, pays $68 a year for emergency medical services. The taxable properties, again, this is, this is our, this is the rub all the time with Westchester.
To be listed on the real estate bill and be tax deductible, correct?
Yeah.
To Mr. McGinnis's point, Mr. Patrick, every year, this EMS situation is going to rise.
Sure.
And I, I think all of us agree that we need a, a, a steady income stream for that to make sure that it's covered, and every year we're not trying to balance by getting rid of a trash truck or getting rid of a dump truck. I think the residents of the borough with the emergency services, now my number was $75 a house. So you've actually lowered it to $68 a house, so you're saving money. You know, so it's, I, I think it's an essential, essential part of our services to our residents. Back in the day, the fire department took care of the emergency services, the, the ambulance. Now, you know, that's when I had brown hair. But now, you know, they're standalone. And other municipalities have done it, and I, I don't think it's a heavy lift for the residents to, to pay $68, in my opinion, not that I'm wealthy, but $68, you know, to have the ambulance show up when you dial that 911, and they're there within four minutes. It's, it's, it's worth it. So it's worth the discussion.
Yeah.
I believe.
Another way to look at it, too, is that we're already charging $38.
Yeah, yeah. So it's well worth the investment in the property tax, which is, really, property tax, is that deductible?
Property taxes deductible.
Yeah, so we're deducting it, too, so.
Most people take standard deduction anymore because that went.
Oh, yeah. When you're retired, it doesn't matter. Yeah, the new president said, we're not paying taxes on Social Security, till I found out. Yeah, I still am, but it's, it's, it's happening.
Paying taxes on Social Security.
But anyway, that was my, that was my point. I think we should explore, make it, make it a, a dedicated fund for the EMS, so we're not worried about it.
That's one option we could work up between now and November, if you'd like. Me, too. If there's enough.
I think so, too. I agree with this versus trying to solve it by balancing what you said, dump truck or selling something off or putting, you know, deferring maintenance on something. It makes sense. We're, we're going to, we're going to spend the money anyway.
Well, I'll also share a concern. And it's, we saw this theme play out with the library, too. Not accounting for capital expenditures in your, in your yearly budgeting. And when you looked at that library budget, I didn't, I looked at the capital. I don't know if that's the exact, the exhibit they gave us. I don't know if that's the exact numbers they're working with. I'm not embedded in the library, and I may be looking at the wrong thing, but I didn't see anything portioned out going to capital outlay. So there has to be money getting put away, even if you're not spending it, putting it away in your capital program. And I'm concerned about GFAC because frankly, it's been plus 10, 15, 6. I sent, I sent an email to some of you, received that. I don't think it was everybody on council. It was a history of how it had, has risen over the last five years. It's been plus 10, 15, 20. Plus 6 was the lowest number, and this year, plus 78%. That's. that's, that's, we need to know more about that. I don't know what that all is. That's probably the industry. That's probably the ridiculous amount of inflation that went into vehicles and parts and maintenance in the last five years. And it's the salaries that he was talking about.
Calls went up by 30%.
So calls went, calls went up partly because the start point of that graph was COVID and Westchester sent all the students home. So our population was down here for, for whatever that was, eight and 10 months before they brought the students back. So I think that we were starting, that analysis kind of started at an artificially depressed number, I think, in my opinion. But calls are, calls are going to go up because we're going to be adding people to town and we're building new apartments. There's the land development agreement with Ruben Steins is getting executed shortly. So it's coming. University is planning on building more on campus housing. And campus adjacent housing possibly too.
So to, to wrap up this discussion, you're going to make a change to the public works. You're going to tweak for the dump truck. We're going to change that, take off the 150, put eight for repairs. You've got some tweaking to do.
I've got some tweaking to do. And what I'd like to do is just package that all together for you the next time we get back in the room in committee and, and the hearing in November. So we're all on the same page as to what our choices or options are. If it's a, if it's an EMS tax that's off by itself, that creates a lot of more, a lot more daylight in the budget to do things. If we, if we investigate your lead and we find something that, that, and it's that much money, well, that's a, that's a big conversation. And come to you in a couple of weeks with those solutions so that we're ready for November.
So we're all in agreement on what's going to be tweaked and that we're going to go with the budget as, as shown. You're coming back in November with, with those tweaks.
Do we have to move this to consent then?
No, you just take a vote because it's, was motioned to discussion.
The motion to adopt it.
Maybe a public comment.
Public comment. Yeah, sure. Good point. Thank you.
No public comment. Okay.
Hey, I will make the motion to adopt it as discussed.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Metrick, please call the question.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimonie?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We will move on now to one of my favorite topics is special event procedures for discounted fees.
Can we time this?
Let's get this done. All right. So I was asked to, to write this up because we were talking about it and wanted to actually codify it. So we talked about a couple of priorities that the act committee wanted to put forth in terms of how we would support events, two pieces of criteria. The first is, we're talking about non-borough planned events. So for instance, the chili cook-off, which keeps coming up. So that would be the first criteria. There's, there's not a whole lot of them that we have right now currently. And then the next piece of criteria would be an event that actually generates the need for the borough to charge a $20 special event fee. So the chili cook-off, again, you know, we're closing streets down per the parking policy, the special event parking policy. We close streets down and we charge special event fee when, when that happens. So those are the two pieces of criteria that we wanted to put forth as a recommendation for providing some support to an event like the chili cook-off. Now, there were some other conditions or criteria that we did discuss and I just want to show those. They're all on the page in front of you. The one that got the most heat or the most nods was requiring the special event applicant to be a 503C company. And I think that that's probably, that's probably another recommendation that we should have. So those three pieces of criteria, what I'd like to put forth for the act committee to recommend receiving some support, which will be on the next agenda item, but we would defer to the parking committee to determine that.
I, I'm in agreement with that, but I, I would also add that the events are open to public all ages as another criteria.
See, I like all of these. I particularly like the one that it's a nonprofit, that it's a nonprofit that we are sharing revenue with in addition to benefits a charity. And, you know, brings event increases awareness of Westchester as a visitor designation. And Westchester has name and logo representation. So I do like your others. In fact, I like all of those others as conditions for criteria for consideration. I think all of them are important. So I, I would agree with all of this.
The only question I have, I, I agree with you, but the increased awareness of Westchester as a visitor destination, how is that actually measured? And I don't want to made it, make it complicated for a 501(c)(3) to have to, and, you know, go through a lot of hoops in order to figure that out.
Couple of examples. So we have some town rags. We have Westchester Press. We have, I can't remember what the rest of the magazines are, but they always feature these events that we have downtown Westchester does, for instance. So it could be measured by impressions, could be measured just by how many times something gets picked up in one of those publications. As an example.
Okay.
Can we measure it by the number of people that show up? It sounds like John, John's got his fancy mapping geo stuff that he does.
Just on that, I'm happy to share that data. The one thing about Placer AI is it uses cell phone tracking. Right now that's accurate, but as like Apple and others go to limit or increase privacy settings, something like my organization's could be evaluating in like two years. Just, it's something we're going to have to constantly evaluate to see if that is effectively picking up the number of people as those privacy things. Because they're going to try and make it up with the algorithm. We'll see if that's actually accurate. So I'm just putting that food for thought out there. But I'm happy to share any data that, you know, council requests.
Hey, John, take a second. So maybe not everybody knows how that actually works. You presented it at the bids, where, like, with the phone, how long they're here, what they're doing.
Yeah. So Placer AI is a AI tool that we use that you can create a geo fence over a specific area. Time and date it however you would like. You can also set it for, you want visitors. So visitors would be defined as anybody that the program doesn't realize is domiciled in that geo fence. The way they do that is like if they recognize the phones pinging overnight for extended hours, that's somebody who's living there regularly. If the worker is defined as somebody who's there from like the nine to five hours, it's pinging that regularly within that geo fence. That's how it filters it out. You can set time increments. So I usually do like 15 minutes. So that way it's not somebody walking through or driving through that area to properly get that. So it's the amount of pings that the AI software picks up. And then they do have an algorithm to extrapolate how many people. It's fairly accurate for, you know, especially for our free events, the Kris Kinnell Market, the Restaurant Festival, the Halloween Parade. Those are good tools. Chili Cook-Off could probably give you, because they're doing the band sales, they can probably tell you off band sales how many are doing them. But for the other events that don't have like those specific sale types, it is an option. And I can manipulate that a million different ways, create new geo fences. So it's available to council, it's available to the properties in town, to the businesses in town. So a lot of cool things I could do with that.
Well, it sounds like we have a way to measure this in some reasonable way.
Might be hard for, might be hard for a new event.
Yeah. How would you rate that ahead of time if you're determining this before you're, you would want to know whether you were going to reduce the fees or split the fees before the event so that they could plan appropriately. So you wouldn't know the number of people until after the event, right?
I hope they have a projection of how many people they think are going to show up if you're running a new event.
For this particular line, it says the event has to increase awareness of Westchester. That's what it says. So we can say something like, have proof that you published this, whether it's on Facebook or in one of the local magazines, some, just prove that you aren't just doing this. Prove that you have some marketing effort out there. And then I'd say we've met that criteria.
I feel like any event's going to have that. You know what I mean? So I, so I'm not even sure why it's necessary, honestly.
That's, that's why it was someone that we considered, but we didn't necessarily put it at the top. It wasn't a priority, but um, it would be nice to have. It could be complicated just because we're talking about it right now for so long and how we would measure it. So maybe that's something that we would take out.
I agree that if we talk, if we talked about it for five minutes, yeah, I agree that it's probably too complicated right now.
I think it's only complicate, I'm sorry, was someone speaking?
Start talking at the same time. Was me, Lillian?
Oh, oh, I wasn't sure who. Okay. I think it, I think it's only complicated because we're making it complicated. But I think if they're marketing in any way or shape or form, you know, through all social media and getting the word out, that certainly, long-term, if this becomes a repeated event, it certainly gives awareness as one of the events that Westchester has in their town. Or even if they're just putting the events in the hotels as something that a visitor can go to. I think it's a statement that, you know, we're not asking someone to be precise in terms of how they're measuring it, but I think it is important that if we're looking at criteria, that these nonprofits know that it has to represent not just them, but it has to represent all of Westchester. I don't think it hurts by putting it in there because we're not trying to hold their feet to the fire to do any precise measurements. So I think as long as, at the end of the day, this nonprofit, whoever's doing it, knows that this has to represent us all, you know, in the bigger picture, then I think that's what's important.
So one.
Maybe we should talk about this for another month and say, then it should be a great visitor destination.
One, Mr. Travis, I want to thank you for taking the time to do this in, you know, 24 hours or less, probably less, right? Because we didn't leave here till 10:30 last night. But my only comment here is, and I think I shared this with you, is limiting the, the, the amount that we're sharing, right? So if it's, and I don't see that on here, maybe that's part of parking, is the 50%, right? I'm looking at this statement where it says for non-boroughs, special events triggering a $20 fee, parking fee, qualified applicants must be credited 50% of the special event parking revenue, not to exceed applicant's total cost. I'm not sure why we would fund entirely a nonprofit.
Yeah, this, this is definitely going to be something to discuss.
Okay.
And that was just there just to show you how this criteria could be baked into policy.
Okay.
And I don't really want a separate policy for this. I think it should be somewhere, either parks or parks and rec or parking.
Yeah. Okay. I would just suggest that, you know, we put a limit on it as well, similar to what we did with the chamber, right? I think we capped it at 10. And then, you know, not to exceed their, their, not to exceed that $10,000. But I, you know, I, I think this defines what we need to do. I, I like what you're saying. I don't know that it belongs in parking, the cap. But I mean, I'm happy to put it there. Does that make sense to put it in?
I, I had talked to Brian earlier and tried to modify the existing parking policy to include what was proposed here and changed it to the special event, special event and parking policy. Let me see what it's called. Sorry. Special event and special event parking policy. So it sort of has, it didn't include all of the tenants, listed just the 501(c)(3), but we could add the other items there. And then it also discusses the parking revenue and the sharing in there. I tried to put it together so that.
I'm not trying to jump ahead, but can we say that we're going to cap it at, you know, cannot exceed the total cost of the event and it can't exceed $10,000? So if they want to spend $2 million on it, we're still only going to give them $10,000. And if they want to spend $500 on the event, we're not going to give them $10,000.
Yeah. And that's what I think we need to, right? Not to exceed 50% of their cost or $10,000, whichever is less, right?
So in the other policy, it says 50% of the garage revenue. So.
So can we add that language? And this is jumping, I guess.
Yeah. Mr. McCoy, this, can we stick, stick to the?
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order. The item that's on the table.
Okay. So would someone like to make a, a motion?
I would like to make a motion to, to move this forward. What, what are we, removing the one line? No, it's not. The Westchester Borough be given, no, not that one. We're keeping that one.
We're keeping everything.
We're, we're keeping the awareness one. We are keeping that? Okay, fine. Just move the entire thing forward as is.
Question. So this, yeah, this la, this last part here, this last sentence, are we moving forward with this?
That's sample language. That's, it says this might look like this in draft policy. It's draft illustrative, not meant to confuse anyone.
Okay. For a public comment is welcome, of course.
Lisa Kearns, West Middle Street. So if an organization or an event meets these criteria, they automatically get this? Or do they have to ask for it? That's the first part of the question.
Well, I believe they should ask for it, for sure.
Okay, they ask for it. And the second part, or the, the last sentence there where it says they can use the logo of Westchester. Hypothetically speaking, some organization comes in here that goes against, say, the values of the borough. Do we, do they automatically get the opportunity to use the borough logo on their stuff?
I think that would be part of the special event application.
But I don't know that we can turn down, you know, some organization that might want to have a national convention here that might go against our values, if that makes any sense.
Can I pause for a second here?
Yeah.
So this is a condition that allows us to put out.
Okay, that's, that's the clarity I needed. We get to do it.
In tandem with, if we want to.
Right.
Gives us the right, basically the right to also be part of the name of this organization if we feel like it.
But they don't get, they're, they're not entitled to this. Okay. I think if that was clear, that was, thank you for clarifying.
Maybe that just needs to be reworded in a way that just says that has the ability to utilize name logo represent, or, you know, has the authority to utilize name logo in tandem or something like that. So that was at the discretion or something.
It's fair. We agree with that. Okay.
So, Mr. Metrick, just a question. Do we need to finalize the wordsmithing of this this evening in order to make the motion and move forward?
I heard was move this special event definition and procedure for discounted fees that includes all of the items on this memo that I'm looking at right here. So that's good enough for me.
Not discounted fees. It's, it's, should be, so just general, it's support. We haven't defined how we're giving support yet. That's the next item.
The fees are going to be on parking. It's not good.
All right.
Public comment.
Hi, I'm Brenda Russell, the CEO of Fiorenza's Food for Friends, and we are hosting the Westchester Chili Cook-Off this Sunday. Hopefully, weather's supposed to be wonderful. I just wanted to clarify one thing, and this is, it looks like we don't need to really make a lot of comments here, but we were curious about the parking fee increase from $10 to $20 and what, why that came about. Just curious as to what the impact of having of having an event like this is to the parking? Because we are already paying to close the streets, um, paying all kinds of permits and things like that. And we were curious as to why the fee for the garages went up on Sunday when there is no fee right now on Sundays. Curious.
I will, Ms. Ramsey, but my understanding is we'd like to be able to support these events. And so in order to do that, we still have to cover our regular parking costs. So we still need revenue to be able to do these things, so. Ramsey, I don't know if you wanted to chime in here?
As far as the increase goes, I think we had fluctuated between $10 and $20 for special events, and I, I believe that was before I even started. I don't, you know, I don't know what the impetus was, but the goal here for me and for parking, I believe, is to, if we engage a $20 special event fee for parking in the garages, then the hope is, on the next item, to reduce the overhead costs for the people holding the event in some sort of cost reduction with that garage revenue sharing.
Understand, but we're just thinking that, jeez, it's $20, and they're, and they're paying to go to the event, although I know, I don't think there are fees for the Halloween or the Christmas, um, parade, that this could impact attendance just to an event, whether it's the chili cook-off, which there is a fee, it's $10, $15 day of, so we hope to see you guys there. But, um, all of that, you know, plays into people that are coming. Uh, I don't even know how many parking spaces are in the garage, which would then kind of impact things too.
Uh, yeah, I mean, typically, I think this is one of the few events that has a cost to get into it. Typically, they are free, and so there, there isn't a, I don't think there's a huge impact because people are accessing it for free, but, um, I don't know the number of spaces off the top of my head. And I don't know if there's an impact. I mean, I think that's a, a risk that we're willing to take at this point and, and an opportunity to bring in some revenue to help share the costs and to engage with more events.
We're very appreciative, because I thought we were coming here to say that we weren't getting the 50%, but when we're reading this, it's like, well, it's, seems like it's still in place. Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
You're not complete, we're not done yet.
Okay.
We have item C.
There, so just try, just be patient.
Yeah, okay, that's what, it felt like we were combining the two sections here, so.
Not yet.
Okay, all right.
Haven't gotten there.
Step back.
Mr. McCoy, there's a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded.
Okay, Mr. Metrick, call the question.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Amen.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Absolutely.
Ms. Shimoney? Mr. McCoy?
That's you.
Yes.
Okay, my second favorite topic, uh, C, motion to amend the parking policy for special event parking in the borough parking garages to include a 50%, 50% split of parking fees with the applicant.
This is the 50% split, but let, let us have our discussion and then you come up. That's the order.
Judge Judy says you're winning, so you may not need to help here.
Hopefully. So this is, Ramsey handed out the, the parking policy. What we just discussed was clarifying the language so that the, there is a cap of $10,000. But there's also a bottom limit. Ms. Dorsey, could you please repeat the way you worded that?
Will be reimbursed 50%. Or 50% of the parking fees collected in the lots, in the garages, not to exceed $10,000 or which, whichever is less. So it's 50%, but if you only, you know, if it's only $10,000, we're not going to give you $10,000, we're going to give you five.
Not to exceed the cost of the.
Right, not to exceed the cost of the event.
Should then be 50% of the event, not to exceed 50% of the cost of the event. Up to 50%, that's what it should be.
Cap to $10,000.
Whichever is lower.
Whichever is less.
Whichever is lower, yeah.
Yes. So is that?
That will need itemized, you know, expense sheet like we did get from Chamber of Commerce, from anyone else, right?
Are we splitting the cost of the event or are we splitting the revenue of the garage? Because.
Splitting the revenue of the garage.
Okay.
But we're only splitting it up to half the cost of the event or $10,000, whichever is less.
No, what I heard was not half the cost, but the cost of the event. Or maximum 10,000.
It's half.
Half the cost.
Half the cost.
All right.
Yeah, up to half the cost of the event or 10,000.
50%, 50% split of the parking revenue will go towards a maximum 50% of the cost of the event with a cap of $10,000. Up to $10,000.
Okay, I will.
Nine, nine, nine. Nine, nine cents.
To, okay, so I had edited, like I said, the parking policy to include the ideas from earlier. Would everybody be open to having this as one special event and special event parking policy that includes the items? Okay, okay. So you do have a draft of that, but I can modify the verbiage to include all the things you just said that I will watch again on YouTube tomorrow.
And I'm just going to say this out loud specifically for the Chili Fest vendors that participate in special events will be given one parking pass per vendor for free parking in either the garage or the lots.
What?
That was Miss Flynn.
So that was something that Keith had requested, that was something that was in here. But I, I do want to say, you know, this also includes engaging the lots, this policy, which we are not going to be able to do until the Christmas parade. So I just want to put that out there. I don't, I have different feelings about the free vendor parking passes, but I just wanted to put that out there. That was a Keith suggestion that I think Parking Committee and then Council had decided when we were dealing with the whole Sunday event thing.
So what are we doing?
One of the, uh, inclusions, and this was from a few months ago, was that vendors that participate in special events will be given one parking pass per vendor for free parking in the garage or the lots, and that was a request that Keith had.
For any and all events? Because do you know how many people are in the Chili Fest vendors?
There are more, you know, a lot of the other events. I wasn't a huge fan of this, but this was something that Keith had proposed, so I'm open either way. This was.
Is it one per vendor, like, so if you've got a team of 10 people, is it like one person gets a parking pass?
Yes, that was what was intended. I think the longstanding tradition, and again, this is why this all came up, was to kind of clarify and put this in writing, was that, um, because the special event fees wouldn't start until an hour before the event, Keith would tell everyone, the garages don't start charging until X time, get in there early. I always said to Keith, that's the only place we can charge for parking, and you're taking it all with your vendors, but I'm trying to be pragmatic and diplomatic on this, so I'm open to how Council feels about this. It is a loss of revenue.
Clarify, all the surface lots, Sundays are free, correct?
They are right now, but again, after, the goal was to get, you know, we're still ordering supplies, and the goal is to get the lots, uh, the kiosks and everything programmed so that by the Christmas parade, this would include all of the lots and the garages for all special events moving forward.
Okay, because right now, it just is parking garages. I think the.
Line says lots.
Yeah, the, the revenue sharing is only for the garage revenue. It does not include the lot revenue. But the policy encompasses garages and lots.
So, so can you, um, make specific one garage for vendors?
I mean, I guess we could, because then we would have to give a specific pass for that garage.
I mean, what?
I, I think everybody typically parks in Chestnut Street, but this is not a perfect science, this is, you know, we're creating this system right now, so.
Okay, so we, we are stuck on this one minor item.
I don't think we're terribly stuck on this. It's confusing, but it's, I don't.
I haven't heard a motion yet.
We'd like to make a motion to move this forward with the modifications about the limits of the revenue sharing.
Second.
Mr. Metrick, please call the question.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Okay. Our last discussion item is a motion to approve, uh, employee separation agreement.
I was thinking.
Move.
Good.
Mr. Metrick, please call the question.
Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Flynn?
Yeah.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney? Uh, Ms. McCoy, uh, Mr. McCoy, sorry.
Okay, finally, we have old business or consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Good.
Mr. Metrick, please call the question.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
I'm not used to that order, but yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, is there any other business? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 8:33, thank you.